I saw one game up.
Okay, we're ready.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting held February 10th. Here it's at seven oh five at City Hall, 80 South Superior Street. We'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance. Levi, could you lead us in that, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you have the bills and the agenda before you?
I'll make a motion to approve the current agenda and approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 13th, 2025, and approve the payments of bills.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, HECO engineering report.
Good afternoon, city council. This is the status report for February 10th of this year. We've only got one item on today's update. Page three, section E. Twenty on the idea of strategic initiatives program. Uh, number twenty, HECO is working with the city on the city of on the commercial street of warranty ads to submit to the contractor within the warrant, um, one-year warranty period. Once we receive sufficient, we'll let them know, send them a letter indicating the defects that need to be corrected before the November warranty period.
So there's some, uh, there's some issues with, uh, they were brought up by Ernie down here in Salubria. There's a few, quite a few spots where, um, the asphalt's coming up. There is, it's eventually gonna cause some potholes and then it's cracking on one side and, um, there was another spot right across from the motel parking that they had paved. It's a pretty, pretty decent sized spot where it looks like it's gonna eventually be a, you know, get worse and worse. But you can see where the asphalt's starting to chip away a little bit.
Really?
I hit a pothole coming around. I went warming up the truck as I was driving down to Howler, turned down Howler and came back this way. Slipped on Howler, I hit something.
Did you turn out from ninety-five onto Howler?
Yeah.
Is it po- okay, well, there's, that section was really, really bad where they had to tie into the, uh, highway side of it, so. Yeah, well.
Pretty abrupt.
Well, it just, yeah, cutting a straight line was not really possible. It was more like chipping it out.
If I'd hit it with the car, probably would've lost a tire.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll go down there and look at that one too, so.
Okay, anybody have any more questions for Robert?
I have one. Um, have you guys heard anything on L.R.I.P. or? Letters of Interest or any of that?
The letter of interest, we, we should be, the city should be receiving an email here within the next month or two as far as the draft stages of the LOI. Same with the out there.
Okay.
About early to mid-April. This was the full timeline.
We still haven't received the final wastewater facility plan finalized. Where's that at right now?
Yeah, we've been in contact with DQ, with the person working on it, Gary Carroll. We don't know what's going on with, on their side, but we've been contacting them. Let us know then what else we need. As to complete that.
You guys have gotten all their questions answered.
Yes, it was the last submitted we did in December. It was just for approval. And I know they were working on the environmental document for the new two alternatives. So that much, pretty much got finalized last time, so we're just waiting for the final figure on that. We'll check them on it this week. Keep you guys informed of the situation.
Okay, thank you. Item three, ordinance number two dash two zero two five, Historical Preservation Committee. Anybody gonna lead the discussion on this?
Mr. Reckless?
Oh yes, we changed that.
Updated language that the state is using so that our reading appears.
And section nine dash two dash three, Historic Preservation Commission. Subsection A, Appointment, Qualifications, Terms, Compensation. Subsection two, Qualifications, Providing for amended duties and qualifications for the City of Cambridge Historic Preservation Commission and providing that this ordinance be effective upon its passage, approval and publication according to the law. Uh, make a motion to suspend the rules and regulations, waive the second and third readings and vote on ordinance two dash two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call vote?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
Make a motion to pass ordinance two dash two thousand twenty-five under suspension of rules and regulations on one reading by title only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
All good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure the wording on commissioner committee was right. It is committee on the other one.
Okay. Item four, ordinance number three dash two zero two five, Museum Committee, action item.
This ordinance was added, um, to acknowledge the museum committee of a whole, so the Historic Preservation Commission is its own entity. It's a CLG, it's a local government. If our CLG ever were to dissolve, we don't have an ordinance that acknowledges the museum committee, um, museum board. So, uh, we put this into place so that we're covering both groups, um, because they are not one and the same from a legal standpoint or from how the state recognizes it. So, um, this is also pretty basic, has the same state language, but you need to go to same city language than a city who only has a house. Very simple.
Mission cut, Levi, I'm gonna do a little, too much of an audience tonight. A retard.
I'll make a motion to introduce and read ordinance three dash twenty twenty-five, uh, by title only under suspension of rules and regulations.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
Cambridge City Ordinance Number Three Dash Two Thousand Twenty-Five, An Ordinance of the City of Cambridge, Washington County, Idaho, Enacting a New Chapter Eleven. Do we have a title in there?
A new chapter eleven to Title One.
Okay, chapter eleven to Title What?
So it's been added, it's under Title One and it's on, so it's a new chapter.
Yeah, I had the attorney decide where to put it under when he made this into ordinance form for us.
He didn't put under buildings, because Historic Preservation is under buildings, that they mainly focus on.
Okay.
Buildings.
Okay. Enacting a new chapter eleven to Title One Administration, Cambridge City Code, entitled Museum Committee, Setting forth the purpose, scope, appointment and duties of a city museum committee and and providing that this ordinance be effective upon its passage, approval and publication according to law. And make a motion to suspend the rules and regulations and waive the second and third readings and vote on ordinance number three dash two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, say it. Say it.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
Make a motion to pass ordinance da- ordinance number three dash two thousand twenty-five under suspension of rules and regulations on one reading by title only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
Item five, new city website, Brandy Lincoln.
Um, we live with the new website on Monday. You can pull it up on your phone now, it is smartphone friendly, tablet friendly, computer friendly. Uh, it's very easy to navigate, I highly recommend you check it out. And it's very easy to pay your utility bill online.
I was gonna say, I can pay my water bill now, I have my phone.
You should be able to come tomorrow, be able to pay your building permit online, our catering permit. And there was one other, I didn't look back into that tonight, so, um, yeah, I highly recommend you take a look at it. If there's things on there that are missing or there's some navigation that you don't like, definitely say so, so that we can make it better. Trying to make everything more user friendly.
And if you haven't been on it, you could pay your bills before on the old website, you have been able to for years, just in case you haven't been on it. But, uh, it's, it's a lot easier to navigate and stuff. And Brandy did a wonderful job, I turned that project over to her and stuff and it's a really nice, user-friendly website and so be sure to check it out.
Cause I did, that's what I used mostly.
For what?
The links to the?
It does, yeah, so all the links are on the old site and then a couple more.
It actually has more stuff than what was on the old website. It even has you guys on there, you know, take a look.
It's not good. So, we've resolved all of our payment stuff, right? Payment processing?
For?
Well, pay bills, remember we had a?
Oh, the BDS stuff? Oh, yes, and I actually, instead of having to make that adjustment, I was able to, we figured it out. It took a lot of work to figure it out, but it was zeroed out, so we didn't even have to make any adjustments.
Awesome.
The new one that works way better, although we're having a few issues with it. Mainly with not sufficient funds checks that were never worked out very timely from it, but the new one seems to be working really smooth.
Okay, good. Thank you, Brandy. Cambridge Commercial Club, twenty twenty-five Hell's Canyon Jam Event Request for Road Closures on Friday, June sixth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at eight AM and extending through Sunday, June eighth, twenty twenty-five on, at noon for North Superior Street, from the intersection of Highway ninety-five in front of the Pioneer, one block east to the intersection of Superior with McKinney, McKinley. Additional road closures requested for Friday, June sixth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at six PM and extending through Sunday, June second at eight AM for Central Boulevard to Third Street.
How do you go from June sixth to the June second?
Yeah, that is a mystery. It should be June eighth, June sixth to June eighth. Oh, yeah.
Where? I wonder if our letters are the same.
Your letters are right, though.
Does the letter hang?
I don't know.
Their letters are right.
Yes, I need June seventh then.
Just cut, cut and paste in the computer isn't up to date.
I didn't even make the letter, so I didn't realize.
We don't have a time machine to go backwards.
I'll make a motion to allow the request for road closures on Friday, June sixth to June eighth.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, Cambridge Commercial Club, twenty twenty-five Hell's Canyon Jam Event, Alcohol Sales and Waiver of City Code, Open Container Ordinance for Event Area, Waiver of Noise Ordinance for Event Concert and City Split Cost of Porta Potties for twenty twenty-five event. Same as last year.
I'll make a motion to approve the alcohol sales waiver, open container, noise ordinance and split the cost of the porta potties.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We got any estimates on porta potty expense, did it go up this year?
Yes, for six hundred dollars.
Oh.
Six hundred dollars. I gotta go wrap that quote real quick.
Let's see, what does it go up?
Six hundred bucks? Yeah. Okay, we retract that last vote. Just kidding. So I guess my question would be, are the door, so, so we've got plenty or just have enough?
Well, we scatter them all over town, you know?
Did they reel them in for the concert? Are they still scattered all over town?
No, we just put a lot in town.
Okay.
In the past, we put two or one at Hunter's Inn, basically in their parking lot. We put one or two on the side yard of the gas station, just so they're all in the gas station. And then we put, we put three right in front of CTC's lawn. And I think three, I can't remember where we put them all.
How many are there altogether? How many are there?
Orpatics?
Yeah.
I don't know, Brandy, how many do we use in here?
I think it just says?
Forty-two?
Yeah.
Forty-two? Okay.
Can they go from the event all the way to the library?
And is that ASAP, is that the company?
No, it's Porta Potters.
Okay. Where are they, where are they headquartered?
Uh, well, Ontario is where they're coming out of with these and then, um, the other one's also.
So there's forty, forty-two toilets and eleven double sinks, double-sided sinks. Did they have much to say about their increase?
Their increase in the toilets went up and their decrease in their fencing was about five hundred dollars, so they evened it all out. I just got a quote, I didn't ask any questions.
So we're not paying half the fencing?
That's correct, you're not.
So it should've went up. Just kidding.
I'm seeing, um, I'm seeing that kind of increase on everything or something went up, two, three thousand, four thousand dollars, so unfortunately, it's just, I mean, I think events and just, it's getting more and more expensive.
Does anybody have any idea how much money is brought into the community through Hell's Canyon Days? Anybody know how much that is?
Yeah, so we made last year, um, our net, we made a little over twenty-five thousand dollars off the event last year.
That's good.
It's completely paid for by the sponsors, um, so.
It puts us on the map and it brings a lot of money into the community and?
The businesses are fairly low.
Yeah, we do, uh, thank heavens we haven't had any, you know, that's vandalism or stuff like that come from it.
Don't talk like that, Ray.
The twenty-five thousand probably isn't the half of it. If you, if you, if you knew what all the businesses were bringing in and everything, that, that's just getting them here, which is awesome.
Even my little business saw a huge jump in those days, so I'm sure the bigger businesses have been doing well.
Fifty, sixty thousand? Well, I mean, that's good, it brings a lot of money into the community. Yeah. So, plus, it's a great event, it's an awesome event, so. Okay, does anybody have any questions on that, even though we've already voted for it and everything?
And that is just a quote, so once we get things finalized and figure everything out, um, it won't go up, but it may go down.
Okay. Okay, item eight, hardened sanitation request to add commercial overages in rates in Exhibit A, which he saw his letter. I have two comments that I would like to make on that. And number one is dumpster availability. Back when I owned the motel, I remember calling twice trying to get a bigger dumpster and they weren't available. And that was one of his comments, that they're trying to encourage their customers that overfill all the time to get new dumpsters. And then my second comment is, I think that commercial overage rate needs to be excluded from holiday because when they don't come and dump on the day they're supposed to, because they took the day off for a holiday, that just adds more trash to the dumpster and then we're being charged because they took a day vacation. Those are my two points.
And the week of Hell's Canyon.
Well, yeah.
No, mine, I think, is my dumpster's full, why create?
You need to utilize the extra.
Right. Remember that.
So I guess what he's asking for us to approve that, apparently they have some new AI thing on their truck that can laser your dumpster as they're picking it up and identify how much stuff is above and beyond the fill and then bill you eight dollars and thirty-one cents per yard. But the complaint is that they have some consecutive commercial businesses that overfill every week and they need some methodology to be able to.
So, do we need to reach out to them and ask them about bigger dumpsters then?
Well, he's, he's saying that, that you can get a bigger dumpster, but I'm saying that I've tried before. So I wish he was here to have this conversation, but he's not. And then I, but I just think those are two items that we need to talk to him about, in my opinion. So whatever your opinion is, I mean, a lot of you have seen dumpsters around before, you may not have a commercial dumpster, but, but my experience is when, you know, when we have a busy week and then there's a holiday tied with that week, all the dumpsters all over town are overfilled and if they can just come to town and, and laser everybody and, and charge everybody because they are a day or two days late picking up the garbage, I don't think that's fair.
Right.
One thing I noticed on this is the pictures, two of the pictures I don't believe are in, well, one I know isn't in city limits at all. And the other one, I don't think it is either, on dumpsters that are overfull. So I'm assuming those might be the main culprits. I mean, the other one looks like it's up at the high school, right, yeah. But the other two pictures they have in here, I don't believe are in, in, in town, so.
Yeah.
But.
Well, one's on the very edge of town, so they might not be sure whether it's in the city limits or not.
Just an observation I have.
So I guess another question I might have is, if you're out of the city, you have the same exact rates as people in the city?
Well, I don't know if they're at, they probably already just added the surcharge, they don't have to ask for permission.
Yeah.
If we say no, they just wanna do it or?
Well, you know, all in an effort to be fair, I mean, how, you know, I understand their predicament. I mean, just imagine if you were the garbage man and every time you pulled up to a dumpster, it had a hundred bags stacked on top of it. You know, and you were billing for the size of the dumpster.
So do we need to write a letter to everybody in town, say, hey, don't do this? Or we just tell them, hey, we're gonna start charging you for this, warn them that we're doing it?
Well, they should be letting them know that there's a new charge.
Yeah, the, you know, the garbage people, they just want to send them a letter and say, what are we filling your dumpster, we're gonna start charging you? I think, I just think we should have a little leverage in when they can do that. I mean, if it's happening every week, I, I get it, but if it's only happening after holidays, because I know my dumpsters after holidays are stacked full. You know, and they?
Well, in all fairness to them, Travis asked me if he should be here tonight and I told him that looked pretty self-explanatory, I didn't think he probably needed.
He didn't know that I was gonna be all ticked off about the dumpster situations.
So, but you could put it in your motion or, you know, I can ask him to come next month or whatever.
I don't know, I just think that's pretty legitimate argument.
Tell him to ask him to come next month.
Or you can tell me to go talk to him and?
You can go talk to him.
Work this out.
Yeah, go talk to him, work it out.
Or you could make a motion so it's done, but you could talk to him about the expectations and if he, you know, if he doesn't like it, then he could come back to the council and?
Okay, yeah, you can just put that in your motion.
I just have a question, it doesn't have any to do with that, I don't use them, but a quarter is three months, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if it's ninety-eight, eighty-seven quarterly for a single-family residential unit, but it's only twenty, thirty-five monthly for what roll out? Container for commercial units and multi-family residential units, it would be better, it would be cheaper to get a dumpster at your house. Wonder why everybody doesn't do that?
Nobody wants to bring a dumpster around that they can't move.
When you get a dumpster, everybody's stopping and putting it in.
Yeah, well, that's true, you get dumpster, you have a lot of friends when you have a dumpster.
Yeah, that's true.
Everybody's your friend.
The bank guy usually walks. Who was the guy living in Pioneer Building? Richard?
Richard?
Boy, he passed everything over to that bank.
I'll have to ask him about that next time.
I had a lock on our bank, yeah, that'd be.
I didn't wanna word it. I'll make a motion to approve the request and add commercial origins and rates.
With the exception?
With the exception of dumpster availability and to exclude holidays. And permission for the mayor to orchestrate that, how about that?
Perfect.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item nine, Rogue Credit Union Visa Cards.
Okay, so we've moved most everything over to Rogue, except, um, I've got a little bit of money still in US Bank that's been, probably most of it transferred this month. But we haven't changed our credit cards over and it would be a lot smoother transition if we get everything over there and I don't want any fees, just to have to leave a little bit into US Bank. So, um, I talked to them and US Bank's credit card system is really
So I talked to them, and US Bank's credit card system is really complex, since we're a government agency and stuff, that had, it's, you know, it's a whole thing in itself and stuff. And so it does things a certain way. Basically, the council had authorized the use of credit cards on it, but I was the administrator and could go in and look at everyone's credit card and their credit amount, and I could adjust those and things. And at Rogue, we can either have one limit and everyone use the cards, or we can have them separated out by credit limits for individual cards and statements. And at Rogue, they're going to need meeting minutes with your motion and approval to do it, instead of how it's done with US Bank. So I would like to see it done, separated out like it is before. So I know exactly what Public Works charged, exactly what I charged, exactly what the deputy clerk charged. And the credit limits before on those, I had myself at five thousand, Cory at five thousand, I believe it was, and Brandy at three thousand. Those were implemented years ago before the price increase. And I know Cory and I have had some issues. We had a pump go down and we needed to get something ordered immediately to get it here to keep things going and stuff. And they wouldn't do credit. We had to pay for it. And so we had to have them split it on our credit card, half go on his credit card, half go on my credit card and stuff, in order to try to get it here and stuff. So I'd like to propose the limits that I have on that last page there. Ten thousand for mine, eight thousand for Cory's, and five thousand for Brandy's. Anything over any of those limits always comes to the council, all of it comes to the council anyway. But that way, if we had an emergency come up, something could be done. So that would be a total of twenty-three. And Rogue Credit Union would need in their motion, who the signers are, which I'm proposing as three, and, you know, who you would let sign, and the amount. So I need the specifics in a motion.
Make a motion to, let me get this straight, use the titles, correct?
Yeah.
Ten thousand, a credit card for ten thousand limit for the city clerk, eight thousand limit for Public Works, and five thousand for, is it assistant clerk?
Assistant clerk.
From Rogue Credit Union.
I have another question, though. What about, is there any chance the mayor will have to use any of these?
Rarely. And the things that he does, I usually put on mine, you know, if I sign him up for something or whatever.
Okay, I just wonder in case, in case of a accident or something, I'm just curious if there's.
I mean, he could have one if you guys want him to have one.
Mayor doesn't want one.
I'm just, just covering bases off. I'll take one if you might want.
Gas is high or fuel is high for them trucks.
So I'll second it.
It's been moved in second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Cambridge Comprehensive Plan, Proposed Updates on Chapter Three. Housing, Chapter Four, Economic Development, Chapter Five, Land Use, Chapter, and Proposed Overlay Zone for Medium High Density.
Okay, I, hopefully I can put this in an order that'll make sense to you guys. But the mayor had talked to me about how can we possibly do something different in the city on zoning, to be able to get more infill in the city? Or is there a spot in the city that may be able to handle higher densities because of that we don't have affordable housing and there's not enough housing in our area, things like that? So first, I'd like to start with Chapter Three Housing of our Comprehensive Plan, because when I looked into being able to change anything, we have to make it consistent with our Comprehensive Plan. And our Comprehensive Plan was done actually nine years ago. It's time for its review already. It came around kind of fast. But I kind of wanted to talk about Chapter Three Housing, because what we already have in our Comprehensive Plan, in my mind, actually supports the thought that we have as far as making a, a different density and also possibly an overlay. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about that after we go through the comp plan. So on housing, it talks about, in the introduction, the provision of housing is also closely related to the local economy, both as an employment or business opportunity, and also by providing housing for local workers. So it talks about local workers and we don't, we've talked before, we don't have enough housing for local workers. It's been brought up at meetings by other parties as well, that they need housing for other workers. So our comp plan does talk about that. And in our comp plan, in this section, a lot of our charts and things are actually outdated. I've asked Brandy to try to go in to get some information that maybe we can update those with. But then if you go to Housing Types on Page Three, it says the following housing development options that may be considered. These options are not the typical detached, single-family dwelling. It should be noted that the city may have to develop new land use requirements of the zoning and subdivision ordinance in order for these types of units to be considered under housing types. And so that's why I feel when we get to the land use section, that it tells us right there, we may need to develop new land use requirements. And not the typical ones, because things are changing. And then in the next, in, on the next page, it talks about under Housing Types, Patio Homes, Town Homes, and Condominiums. It doesn't have any other type of housing that are different types. And so if we were to change the comp plan, so it can be consistent with the other parts that we're going to go into, we would probably need to add something for apartments, and then also single-family medium-high-density homes, to make the plan consistent. And then on Page Five, under Accessory Dwelling Units, it talks about that the city of Cambridge has a limited amount of land available to build new housing units. As previously discussed, infill development could be a solution, but there's another possibility, an accessory dwelling unit. And we've already passed the ADU part of that last year. In fact, I had an inquiry today about putting in an ADU. So we already kind of tried to put that in place to help the housing issues, but it talks about that infill could be a solution as well. And under Other Housing Developments, it talks about consideration of these options may necessitate adjustments in existing land use requirements. Then it talks about infill, that infill development is the process of developing vacant or underused parcels within the city. Infill development allows the utilization of existing community services, such as sewer and water, rather than constructing new facilities outside on areas that have not been developed in city limits. Police and fire service areas wouldn't need to be extended. In addition, infill development has the opportunity to A, reduce the consumption of land and resources; B, fully utilize existing facilities and services, rather than extending costly services to outlying areas, thus offering savings for local government budgets; C, increase the housing supply; D, renew the investment in the city; and E, provide energy and environmental savings. Infill development could protect the natural surroundings of the city of Cambridge. So those are, you know, some positive things that help by having infill development. And then under Zero Lot Line section, it also talks about communities may also create provisions for building two single-family dwellings on a single lot. And that's something that, you know, considered, but that, you know, shows that higher densities, you know, are, could be considered in our comp plan. And then, in the summary, it says, on Page Seven, under three point seven, it says, "This plan represents a forward-thinking view of the importance for attracting and supporting a variety of housing types and affordability in order to achieve the stated vision for this community. It is important to create an environment conducive to development and to consumer demands, while protecting community values. This perspective is consistent with all goals in this plan that seek to enhance the community livability." And so, you know, it talks about needing to be forward-thinking to, you know, achieve what we need, and it mentions affordability. And we've talked about that affordability is kind of our biggest problem anymore with housing. And then it goes into the goals and the objective plan for housing. And Goal One is to provide an adequate supply and mix of housing that meets the needs of present and future residents in terms of cost, location, accessibility, housing type, lot design, lot size, design, and neighborhood characteristics. And then on the back page, it goes into the objectives and policies for development patterns. Support incentives for high-quality development. Support development concepts that incorporate a mix of compatible land uses. Encourage infill development. Develop policies for infill housing development. Determine the housing capacity within the infill areas. Provided diversified housing stock. Provide policies to incorporate a mix of residential types in the residential areas. Encourage developers to integrate a wide variety of housing types, sizes, and price points to their developments." So those are the things I picked out of those objectives that correlate to higher densities and infill. So that's the housing section of the comp plan. So if you want to go to the economic development on that, and how what's going to be proposed is, would affect that section, if you go to Page Two, the first whole paragraph, it says, "It's important to emphasize that the local economic environment has significantly changed for Cambridge from historic patterns. While there are negative results from this change, there are also new opportunities to mitigate the downward economic trends over the last decade. This plan reflects the intention to illustrate cities' leadership, support, and engagement in policies, practices, and procedures that promote the potential of economic growth and opportunity in Cambridge." So that's one thing we're trying to do, is, you know, to promote the economic growth and opportunity. And that sometimes it's need to change from historic patterns. What's always been done may not always work.
It's scary to look at that list and see how many of those businesses aren't here anymore.
It is. Yeah. A good share of them, actually. And on Page Six, under Cambridge Trade Area, if we were to redo these sections of the comp plan, I also wanted to mention that we might want to add mining into four point three. Because it's possibly going to have a, an impact on our trade area and the economy of Cambridge. And then also, there might be a few tweaks in four point four. We don't have a farmer's market anymore, music in the park. We might not want to clarify that. Then I was asking Brandy, should we really saying, be saying spring for health canyon days, or should we say summer? And even though the date isn't technically the beginning of summer, everyone assumes, thinks June is summer. So she thought it might be more accurate to put in summer. And then in the summary, it says, at the bottom of that paragraph, "Other livability factors will play a large role in the development of economic opportunities, and the goals, objectives, and policies of this plan seek to support these type of initiatives." So it's talking about livability factors. And so the part that I'm going to propose, that the mayor of I've been talking about, is also a place where we think it'll be promote more livability, because it has walkability for a higher density as well. And so, under the Development Goals and Obli, Goals, Objectives, and Policies on the next page, it talks about Goal One, and it mentions diverse housing options for existing or new residents. So that's basically, we're going to be talking about with this proposal, is that it would give another housing option that hasn't been considered before, for existing or new residents. And Objective One is support economic development that employs local workers and provides living wage household incomes for families and individuals. And that's basically what we're trying to do, too. We've been talking about, there's not affordable housing for our workforce, and that also, they need a, a living wage. And so those kind of go hand in hand. And at the bottom, under Policy One, it says, "To create adequate opportunity for mixed-use development in appropriate areas of the community." So that's what this proposal hopefully will do. And on the last page, under Objective Four, Policy One, it says, "Encourage mixed-use and infill development in areas consistent with the Comprehensive Plan." So I feel our economic development section basically supports the proposed changes that we might look at in our land use section of our comp plan. So first, if you want to look at the map that I put in here before we go to the land use section, so you can see what the proposal is. And this can be tweaked, this is just a suggestion. What we're looking at is taking this part of the city right here, between First and Second Street, and going up just on this side of McKinley, for a new zone for medium-high density. Right now, our highest density is six, and we're proposing going from six to 10 in that area.
Would it be considered an overlay zone, correct?
And I've looked into overlay zones, so instead of having to rezone, because part of, well, actually, you could also consider putting this, part of this commercial zone in there if you wanted to, the front side, kind of like where Levi lives, and that side clear to the alley, too. But an overlay zone, we can put on top of it and make a special use for it without having to rezone it. So this could still stay, stay residential, this could still stay commercial. And so they would have the rights that they already have, but there would be an overlay on top of that area that would give them the right to build medium-to-high-density housing. And why we picked this area a little bit is, it, there's some places that already have what you might consider higher-density housing in some ways, even though it's apartments. So it has the regular Sitka apartments there, and it has the senior housing ones there already that have a, a higher density in there. And right now, we have Sitka that's considering, if they can get some funding, building new apartments there, and possibly two new sets of apartments there. You know, if they can get funded, because they have enough space for two. And the other reason this was picked, because it's close to the commercial zone and the central business district. So it gives a higher-density area the chance to be more, have a more walk, walkable access, that they can walk to their services, you know, so that's why we didn't pick another part on a different side of town, too. Because a lot of higher-density areas that, they want them in walkability areas. So if we go to Chapter Five on Land Used in our comp plan, and you'll just see my notes, because, you know, I've made some notes on there that aren't specifically to the plan, but if we change the comp plan, kind of need change, just like it says phone company, and that's kind of outdated, to change it to telecommunications in that paragraph. And then we'd have to change, if we do make a, a resolution on a future land use map, that part would need to be changed. And that's the only reason I have that first paragraph highlighted. But if you go to five point two, under Agriculture, it talks about, it says excluding CAFOS in that section. But if I go into code, we have a definition for. But if I go into code, we have a definition for CAFOs and what CAFOs can be, and it conflicts with some of this. And so, I think the council needs to decide, do we allow CAFOs in the city limits? Do we allow CAFOs in the new proposed area of impact? CAFOs come with a lot of restrictions.
Do they know what a CAFO is?
So that's something I'd like the council to discuss, because if, so when we're looking at all sections, that since we're trying to, you know, revamp things a little bit, that we make sure we're consistent there in case a CAFO happens to come up in our, especially our impact area. Then also, in our current land use patterns, it lists Commercial-Industrial. We don't have Commercial and Industrial combined zone in our city limits right now, and zoning, and we don't even have it defined, I believe, on our future land use map. So I don't know if that's something we do want, and we need to put it into our future land use map, or if that's something that needs taken out. Okay, then if you go to the next page...
Can somebody find someone else's to refer to? What we could go by on that, on Commercial and Industrial?
We could. It'll take some studying to try to figure out who has it. I just wanted to see if you felt there was even a need for it. We don't have any industrial zoned anymore within the city limits because of the insurance issues. We went ahead and rezoned everything to Commercial instead of Industrial. So the only Industrial we have is on our future land use map, which is going out Mill Road on the right-hand side, kind of where CTC is already, and a little bit of land in that area.
So is Industrial just fit under one category? Or is there such a thing as Light Industrial, or would that just be Commercial?
Someplace, there's some places that have Light Industrial and Medium and Heavy Industrial.
What is the difference between Commercial and Industrial?
Well, that's, I mean...
Your uses.
Yeah.
Retail businesses. Industrial would be your...
Industrial more like warehouses, you know, big, you know...
Wouldn't Cy be like Industrial?
Like what? I'm not sure he could probably be Commercial.
I don't know that he would classify as Industrial, because he's not really big. I think Industrial is more, you know, size-wise.
Commercial and Industrial, please, or two? I mean, why is it even...
Well, for new people, some would be grandfathered in, but you'd have to mean what the uses are of that zone. Now, one thing that...
So I wanted to sell his business, which he's talked about, and if that's going to be...
Well, you could go as far as looking at the co-op, too. They got the big fertilizer thing there. Is that Industrial, or is that just Commercial?
And...
And gas, hazardous.
Well, it's basically grandfathered in unless they make it another use.
I'm just saying.
Type of thing. But one thing is here, oh, four or five months ago, I had an inquiry. Someone wanted to put a cement plant in the city limits on Commercial property. Do you really want a cement plant in the city limits? Just saying, it actually says in uses it could be allowed. But if you go to other codes, it's usually an Industrial.
Just because of the...
But our code actually says that, and I had to tell them that it could be allowed. That's what our code says. They haven't actually requested doing anything yet, but...
It'd be like putting a CAFO or a feedlot in town.
So there's lots of parts of the, not only the comp plan, but the zoning that, I mean, the whole thing needs... Reevaluated.
How close do you want that to your residential...
So, kind of a brief difference on the two. Here, I found Commercial Zones focus on selling services to customers, while Industrial Zones focus on production and storage of goods. So, I would say, you know, Commercial Zones are kind of designated for businesses that directly interact with the public, while Industrial Zones, large-scale manufacturing operations, warehouses, distribution centers, things like that, with less public access to them. Kind of a...
So I think like county code for CAFO says you can't build within a mile of a CAFO. And so a CAFO might have a bigger impact on you than you're going to have on it.
Yeah. Well, in some places, we say they're not allowed. In other places, we have definitions and uses, and... I own one of the only two CAFOs in Cambridge, and it has a lot of restrictions and stuff. And I would say that you guys wouldn't want to have something like that in town. So...
Or potentially even in the impact area.
Right.
You know, if that's where we are developing, is into the impact area, the CAFO definitely doesn't fit.
So, below that Commercial-Industrial thing I wanted you to take a look at, we already have definitions for Low Density Residential, Medium Density Residential, but we didn't have anything for Medium High Residential. I'm trying to remember who I stole this from. I've been stealing things from so many cities.
The Medium High Density?
Uh-huh. The definition I took that from. I can't remember what town. But I tweaked it a little to kind of fit our town. So the proposal for that is detached, single-family homes are predominant, but a variety of housing types, including duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, apartments, and condominiums could be allowed. Residential densities typically are between six to 10 units per acre on lots ranging from 4356 square feet or greater. Cory, do you want to mention to them why we picked 4356?
So, 4356 is one acre square units divided by 10. I mean, really, that's it. That would be the minimum lot size that they could have to build a single-family dwelling on. That, you know, ranges, because right now, our highest density is only six, which puts, you know, that's a minimum lot size. If we were to go by six units per acre, a minimum lot size of 7260. But our minimum lot size right now is 7560 for some reason.
And in some of the bigger towns, the Medium High Density Residential was actually down to 2,500 square feet. So we're not proposing quite as big of a, you know, density as what's in larger cities, but still giving more density than what we have to possibly have more infill and more affordable housing. And then the other part of that, it says, "Neighborhood activity centers with retail, restaurants, employment, and other services are encouraged within walking distance. Pedestrian-oriented streetscapes are desired." And that's what most other cities want to see with the Medium High Density Residential. But I feel that the proposed area already kind of complements that, that they're within walking distance of restaurants and retail and employment and, you know, the other services in town. And then we already have definitions for Mixed Use, even though we have no Mixed Use zoning in the city limits. We do have a little bit on our future land use map. Central Business District, we have in both. Industrial, we only have in our future land use map. And then Public and Open Space are only in the future land use map and not in the actual city zoning map. And so, what's highlighted, it says, "Exhibit 15 describes the acreage and percentage of each land use in the city limits in the area of city impact." And so Exhibit 15 is our future land use map that we got a grant about 12 years ago from Sage that helped develop this, that was approved with the original comp plan. So that's what they're talking about. But I can't find anywhere that there's a percentage of land use for each, each area. So I don't know if that's something that's necessary or not. And so, depending what you want, we either need to figure that out or take that out of the comp plan. And then under Land Use Concerns, if we do update this section instead of talking about in the last 20 years, then we need to talk about in the last 30 years, since 10 years has almost gone by. Then on page five, or page six, under the Area of Impact, since there's new state law on the area of impact, I thought that we should update that section with the new language. And that's why I have all that underlined stuff that's not included in that. That was added this year by the legislature. And then in the summary of our land use, it says, "As described in Chapter Two, the city would like to increase its population. The goal is not to exceed a population greater than 500 residents. This population goal is based upon available infrastructure." So that was the goal of the comp plan, that we didn't want to grow to much more than 500 people.
So you count us as 10 years, you know?
And so that's, you know, actual residents. So, you know, if it's a family living somewhere, that adds up differently compared to two people as far as space and stuff. But one thing, doing infill or having higher densities would also help on available infrastructure. The infrastructure's there, and we are only 65% to 70% capacity on our water and sewer, somewhere in there. So we have the availability on the infrastructure we already have to have more density there to utilize it, which would be cheaper. Then on the last page, on eight, on Goal Three, it says, "Ensure that the city of Cambridge has sufficient available land within the city and its area of impact to accommodate projected city growth." So that's one thing we need to make sure we have. And determine the appropriate location for future housing development. Coordinate future development where current infrastructure exists. So a goal is to create future development where the current infrastructure exists. And then the land use map, we definitely need to review, because it's getting really outdated compared to our zoning and compared to, you know, how even the surrounding area's been growing. So I don't know how you guys want to approach that, but the mayor asked me to look into it. That's kind of what I came up with.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That was very informative. So I guess what I'm proposing to you, councilmen, is go through this information. Make notes of thoughts that come to you as you read through it. And we need to update these, and so we'll continue working forward.
So I have questions. Darren and Adam and Caitlin and Sunny have thoughts, and since they're looking at buildings...
We'll read through it, too.
One thing, if we change the comp plan, which technically, we probably need to go through our whole comp plan, but that's going to be a big, longer process. And with the changing in the need for housing and we having growth in our area and possible mining coming in, I didn't know if you want to just consider changing a few sections of it, trying to get that in place first, and then later, we can look at the rest of it for a total revision. We will have to have public meetings on the comp plan and hearings and stuff before we can get that changed. But we got to get that changed before we can get any actual code changes made.
Go straight on that. No, you're free time.
So when you make some of these changes here, are you going to have to change some of the offsets?
Like the setbacks for buildings and whatnot?
That would be a whole different thing, because that would have to do with the actual code on zoning instead of the comp plan. Comp plan's more of a vision type of thing.
A dream. As you look at your city, what's it going to look like in 10 years? Or what do you need to...
But you can't enforce any code that's not consistent with your dream. So they've got to kind of go hand in hand.
You got to start there. Okay. Do you guys have any questions? Comments?
So do you guys like the area picked out? You want to expand it? You want to decrease it of what you're thinking?
You want a bigger map to look at? I mean, we're basically trying something new in our city. So is this a big enough area, or is it too big of an area? Or do we need to increase it to this, make it bigger?
Originally, I thought about making it go clear to Cemetery Road, because you're still right by your transportation corridors and stuff, and there's a lot of land over there for use. But after looking at it, too much of the land's in the floodplain. There's not some real buildable spots. So I'm not sure if that it would be worth extending it over there. You could consider going down into maybe the first half of the block of, you know, that's Commercial property there between Superior and First.
So make the dividing line through the alley?
Well, instead of the alley, clear to Superior Street. So if D and B Time Machine wanted to have a higher-density apartment building there or something, or homes or something, they could, too, because they're along the transportation corridor and and even the other side of McKinley would be a possibility. I'm not sure going on the other side of Second Street, that if there's too much, that could be considered, but the way it is now. But eventually, maybe it could be, too. I don't know.
No matter where you do it, someone's going to want to do something different, so...
Yeah.
Well, you just, you've got to start somewhere.
And some people aren't going to like that they're in an overlay district that has a higher density. But we'll have to have public hearings and meetings and go through all that.
The trailer park don't want to take everything out there and put apartments in there.
They might. They might want to be in our overlay district.
Well, Macedo's already talking about it, so...
Well, that's true. Actually, there was talk before about that, which might still already be allowed. Apartment buildings might be allowed there.
On his property.
His property, anyway. I'm not sure. But he could have higher-density ones if he was in the higher-density area. I'm not sure if that would make any difference. It would change size a lot, though.
What was, well, depending on what he wanted to build. If he wanted to build condominiums or fourplexes or something, he could do that already. So, anyway. So this is the first step towards, we've got to work towards this and decide in these chapters what we want to change, what we don't want to change, and how we want it to be.
High-rise stuff, too.
Like 15-story apartment buildings?
That would be in the restrictions of height, building height for zones, so...
I don't think that's going to fly too well around here.
Replace the water tower with high-rise apartments up there.
So... We've got our assignment on what we need to start working on. So start making notes.
So is there anything I need to do to prepare for the next meeting? Or are you guys just going to, well, take more of a look at it?
We've got to start with our land use, right?
Yeah. I think the other two chapters, basically, we have a few tweaks to make to them to get them a little more updated, especially with the facts and figures from the American Community Surveys and Census and different things like that, and just a teeny bit of language. But basically, I went through those to make sure it supported the idea of what we were looking at. But basically, I went through those to make sure it supported the idea of what we were looking at for the land use. And it seems like to me that those sections already support that.
Okay, so I guess mainly then we need to study up on CAFOs. And if we want them or want or don't want them anywhere near our area of impact or the city, also industrial areas.
And if you want a commercial slash industrial, you can go on other cities and see their definitions and how they're used. The hard place is every place has something different. So there's lots of possibilities.
But our, our main goal is that housing, that overlay, that area, is that the area that we want or do we want to make it bigger? Do we want to make it smaller? We just got to decide what we want to do. What's going to be best for our community? That's why we're on the city council. We're supposed to make the mind. As you talk to your constituents about this.
Yeah.
But that's what we need to do. So make notes and then we'll, I guess, next month, we can kind of review what notes we have and start working on it a little bit at a time and get things plugged in and get it to where we want it to be. Okay? Any questions?
Do you have a goal of what you're thinking that our land is going to be?
Yeah, I, I wish I knew. I mean, if we, if we work on it on a monthly basis, I would like to see if we could get some progress made.
Only took four years for the animal ordinance, so.
Yeah, two.
Two and a half.
We're not dealing with animals now.
Just saying.
So.
Well, the hard thing is, is it does require public input. It does require, you know, hearings and things, so.
It doesn't matter.
But then that doesn't really help people. And you get the comp plan in place, but it doesn't help people be able to do anything until we then go to zoning and redo the zoning. So that makes a longer process. So, you know, I know, you know, there's no rentals available and limited stuff to buy or, you know, people are really needing housing. So I guess that kind of.
Some people today.
How fast do you want to?
Have extra people in their house because they couldn't find anywhere to live, so. So it's needed, so we need to get after it. Any other questions or comments about that? Okay. If not, the last agenda item is item eleven, legal agreement for the property owner of thirty-five South Superior Street and development of part of the alley behind the property. And I will be stepping away from the table because of conflict of agreement or conflict of interest. So Gene will take over the reins.
Don't go too far. Get lost. Item eleven, legal agreement. Any notices on it or anything?
Yeah, there hasn't been a big change yet. So the ITD's got to have their meetings down there this week before they get back to us on that. We won't know for telepathy and belief what they come back with on the second approach.
Anybody got anything, an idea?
Anything you want changed or anything you want to talk about, Blake, on any of this?
I mean, I think we, we talked about it a little bit before. Just how we can do it. If we need to just gravel it, roll it, pave it? Or if we need to do it the other way? And if there's any cost sharing involved? Or if I just pave it as it is and it goes to crap in three years from heavy trucks dragging on? Because ultimately, that's my goal is to get bigger rigs through there. Now, how are we going to determine what's going to be best?
I've been doing a little thinking about that. That stays an alley. And if not, hey, that heavyweights and trucks are going to have powder about that deep. So I have a question maybe for the council. How could we, by ordinance or by vote, turn two hundred or three hundred or whatever feet it is in the width to a street? Do we have to change an ordinance or can we vote on it?
Why would we want to change it to a street?
That way, we could go get a grant with matching on it and save him some money.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, you'd have to do the whole thing. I'm not sure the process on that.
Do we have any money that we could split share or cost share with him? I mean, there's going to be a sidewalk just going in that we could.
Yeah. Well, first, if you don't mind, I'd like to, there was some comments made last time that I've done some checking on and stuff just to make, because I didn't want to make the statements without having checked on a little bit first last time just to clarify some things. Someone said, well, the co-op's never done anything. That's not true. The co-op, every year wishes we could do something with Commercial Street, but we told them we'd grade it once. We'll try twice, but we'll guarantee that we'll try to grade it once. And so every year since I've been here, the co-op has maintained the back of theirs on their own dime. And one year, they dug up a whole bunch of it, including base, to put things on. So they've spent their own funds on the co-op. And I got thinking about Cy Wertz done the same thing. He called me just a couple of months ago, hey, Sandra, is it okay if I? But he did use our gravel. This year, he hasn't always, I don't think. But he said, do you mind if I go get a couple scoops of gravel and put down there? I'm going to smooth it out and do it and stuff. It's getting kind of hard to get in here and stuff. So he's done that. And Cambridge Lumber has done some of that, especially when Harvey had it. As far as, you know, they, they would take care of their area a little bit because alls we did was grade it once a year, maybe twice. And then we were talking about how it works for other people because it was mentioned, the truck stop. I checked with the county. The development agreement isn't finalized on that. But the truck stop, part of the development agreement, is that they're required on their own dime to put in a turn lane. They got to put in fog lights and all kinds of other stuff and how that works with the county road and stuff, too. They're waiting on some traffic study information from their engineers to get it to I T D so they can get things finalized. But all of that development will be on their dime. And the new Maverick is the same way. The Maverick paid to put in the turn lanes on Highway ninety-five and all the requirements that the city of Weezer required of them, too. I know that's a little bit different and, you know, on a bigger scale and stuff. And then the other inquiry I made is I talked to Ernie a little bit about things, how things have been handled in the past and this. And one of his comments was, are you sure you want to pave the street? Because otherwise, and just like you guys were saying, maybe it'll end up just like base wasn't done and paving was done on Central Avenue where Rick Wiggins used to live going up to Terry Fry's. And it became such a mess that the city had to tear it out and make it a gravel road. So he was saying, you know, maybe it would be better to keep it gravel so it's easier to maintain than to worry about not doing a thorough paving job. His feelings were if you were to have it paved, it should be done to standard. Worried about the drainage type of thing. Anyway, those are some, some things, you know, that you might want to consider.
So with the work that the co-op did and Harvey did and Ernie did or Cy did, did you have a written agreement with them that made them do that? Or did they just do it?
No, we basically told them, we can't do anything. You've got to figure it out yourself.
Because it helped everybody out without written agreement, right?
Well, it helped them out to have something better for their deal.
But you know what I was getting at? You leave it gravel. What's going to happen? Then the neighbors is going to raise hell with dust that deep on the street.
More than that, if you have a simulation, someone tried to go back there and they bury it back there and they miss the corner and go out through the neighbor's
Yeah.
grass, I mean, you're going to have a mess back there. So I believe something's got to be done to make it.
That's the reason I thought, because instead of two inches, it should be four inches because you get some heavy trucks. And if you watch on two-inch streets, that street goes like that when a heavy truck goes on it at two inches. Watch your wheels and it's just like that. It almost has to be four inches because they're going to be turning right there on that street or alley.
Well, for truck traffic, we put four inches on Commercial Street.
Yeah, truck traffic.
The goal.
Yeah.
One, one thought I had to do what you're saying right there with, can you get a grant to do part of that? One thought is, what if the grant that you got puts in the approaches and then he did the asphalt? Because right now, he's got to do the approaches. And you're saying you can't do the asphalt with the grant. So if you switch them around, could you do something like that?
That's the reason I thought maybe there's a possibility of making that two hundred feet or two twenty-five a street and getting a grant, sharing or, you know, so much eighty, twenty or whatever. That'd save him a lot of money.
We could look at it. I don't believe they'd probably allow us just to take a certain section to comp.
We got a certain section down here about two hundred feet, so what's wrong with that? Going in the Solubia Center, that's only so far in there, that street.
Which street?
Jennifer Street?
The last one down there going in the.
Or Holler. Well, yeah, but that's because we don't own the through. We don't own through Holler to First Street because of that spike triangle.
That's part of it. That's just part street.
But it's also a street already.
But that's the reason I was asking. Does it take it?
Can we come up with some numbers for what it's going to cost to do what he's going to want to be done? So we can start there, like.
If it's possible.
I, I'm all about helping someone that's bringing business in. I mean, Blake has done nothing but, I mean, he supports everything in the community. Donates to everything, kids fair, basketball, anything you ever ask him to do, meets for everything. I have no problem about trying to help him however we can. So if we have any kind of money that we could help him and then maybe other people want to bring businesses in later and say, hey, the city helped us do this. I don't care what Weezer and the county is doing. I'd like to say that this is what our town is going to do.
That's the reason I thought maybe.
If, if there's any way to help him with money or whatever, you know.
That's the reason I was saying.
If there's not, and there's only so much we can do, I understand that. If there's a way to get a grant or give a little bit on, since they're going to do the sidewalks and the approaches anyways, I mean, I don't know. I'm up for anything.
You're going to need to be mindful of the current administration and federal grants. They are going to become more sparse.
Right.
And so if we are following our five-year plan on applying for grants so that we can be updating the streets and things, this is not even on that plan. And so if this isn't going to be an immediate, something we're going to do right away, I don't think grant funding is going to happen. So what's the timeline on that? I mean, it's great to get numbers and stuff like this. This is immediate.
Well, they're already asking, you know, pay enforcement within five years. So I mean, if there's any way we can come up with any kind of money from somewhere else to help, I mean, it's just for the rock to lay down underneath it. I can't see more than for that little section being ten loads of rock, I wouldn't think, you know, to help make the base better. I mean, anything to help them is better than nothing.
Yeah, that's the reason I thought. Off going making a street.
I can put the numbers together for you on the approaches and asphalt if you want.
Right. At least we can start there instead of.
Well, on the approach part, since we're doing our tap, we might be able to have that changed with our grant funding there. I don't know. Because we've kind of finalized the design.
Yeah.
I don't know if that could be opened back up to, because we didn't have anything right there going on. But we do on hopper of that.
Well, yeah.
To help with the approach. As far as reclassifying it, I don't think that they'll take footage like that. I, I mean, I don't know for sure. But also, there's going to be a whole process to go to reclassification to a street. They'll probably have to have traffic counts and stuff in order to.
Obviously, it's so wide.
We got to prove that it meets the classification of a street.
Google Maps already calls it first, or calls it half-street.
It's half-street.
You got to believe everything on Google.
Especially up here.
Well, I was just trying to figure something out. Maybe we could help it.
As far as money, I don't know. You guys have the budget. You can see where you can find the money. It usually takes us several years to save enough money up for a matching grant for some of the other ones we're doing, just like First Street. Hopefully, if we get the grant, this is the third year we've applied, so.
I was getting that. If we make it a street, that'd be the city and a matching grant he would pay for and save him some money. That's what I was getting at.
But I think that's something that would, if it were to happen, is going to be a long ways down the road.
Yeah. We got an action item here. What are you going to do?
I think what is wise, the block, let me just bop this fifty feet wide.
Fifty feet, yeah.
So is the convenience store current lot a hundred feet wide? Sort of like a hundred and fifty feet by what?
Hundred and fifty feet by twenty.
By twenty.
It's the whole, the full width of the alley is twenty feet.
Twenty feet. If we cut those trees down and move that fence.
Yeah. Well, that's the, that's the width.
Twenty feet of pavement on that?
That's the width of the platted alley. So that's not necessarily the traveled path, but that's the width of the alley.
Also, what, I guess for Darren's sake, do you crunch numbers? What kind of width can we plant on? Can we plant on twenty feet of asphalt?
Yeah. I mean, it's. Well, yeah, I guess, you know, you'd have to plant on that, yeah. So eighteen feet wide with two-foot gravel shoulders just to back up the asphalt. Actually. That's, that's, okay, that's what it's platted as, is a twenty-foot alley. That's not what it's, the traveled lane of the alley is not twenty feet. But that, the actual platted alley is twenty feet, so.
I'll put a tape on it tomorrow because I guess technically I've already paved. We have asphalt behind the square so far out.
Yeah.
Anyway, I guess we got five years to figure it out, right?
Was there anything else in this thing that you?
Would you want to consider taking the paving part out for now? And that's something that could be discussed later.
We could just maintain it with gravel and keep it nice for now.
If you talk nice to what you go onto the gravel, they might donate some. You don't know. He's did it before.
I can put a couple of the gravel.
I know, but.
I mean, the city can still grade it and.
And we have equipment, too. If it gets bad, I know where the gravel pile is and I've got a ways to move it, so. We'll just keep it nice for now. The one bonus is heavy traffic will be in December and we know how much rain we get around here. So I don't think we need to worry about soft spots at the moment. But if we do, we got a mess of stuff under that alley. With the sewer, with telephone, fiber.
Yeah, the sewer, I'm not too worried about. It's deep enough back there. Thirteen and a half feet.
How deep's the fiber?
Their main lines are supposed to be thirty-six. Their main lines are supposed to be thirty-six. And, but then the drops, they're supposed to be a minimum of like eighteen inches.
Is that what the pad is right now?
Yeah, so the pad.
The CTC said they'd bury it.
Yeah, well, I don't know how, so the copper is a different story. The copper could be anywhere from four inches to twenty inches deep. And they have, it's a crapshoot on the copper. The fiber, though, when Ted came through and put all the fiber in, they had to meet the minimum, you know, thirty-six, thirty-six inches for the main lines and then eighteen inches for each, for the drop. So, each drop that goes to the properties had to be, you know, had to start at least eighteen inches and then get to the property, so. But I mean, you know, when we did Commercial Street, we excavated down eighteen inches for base and all that. So, I mean, that's, you know, hopefully, all the drops are where they're supposed to be.
Yeah. We just, I think getting some solid numbers or, I guess, as close to solid numbers as we can, just to get an idea of what it's going to be.
Can you maybe put some bigger rock in there? Dig it out? I mean, and then somehow put it in here where if it isn't holding up, we can, you might have to pave it within five years. You know what I'm saying? If it doesn't work. I mean, I don't know. I'm going to hear that.
I mean, it's not in terrible shape right now.
Right.
You know, and like I said, when we're going to have heavy traffic, it's going to be dry. So, we're worried about dust. We could do sort of dust abatement on it this summer and see how it goes.
I don't need to have some of that.
Yeah, they call it road stabilization now, not dust abatement.
Yeah.
That's how they get money for it.
You want to take the payment out of this agreement? Or later? Or pass it the way it is or what?
I would not say to take it out. And then if it becomes a problem, it may need to be paved later, later date.
Yeah, they're going to pave it. He's going to pave it later anyway, so. Why don't we just take the two inches out or the pavement and pass the rest of your agreement? Make a motion.
Everybody good? Del Ray, you good?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to pass the legal agreement with the property owners of thirty-five South Superior Street for the development of part of the alley behind the property and remove the, pave the portion of the alley between above within five years. The pavement must be minimum two inches to remove that for now.
Do you want to put something in there, spade?
Yeah.
Or else, you know, if, if problems occur?
And add if there's such problems that it might need to be paved.
This is made, second?
Second.
Everybody in favors, aye?
Aye.
Against? It's in pass.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Everybody in favor, aye?
Robert, do you know anything about reclassification of an avenue to a street?